The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. The format for this evening is as follows. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will present questions to them. Our schedule of questions comes from our polling of league members. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. And there will not be time for rebuttals. We are scheduled for about 45 minutes. So near the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. The speaking order will be rotated throughout the evening. Suzy Corbin-Meara, a league member also, is our timekeeper tonight. She will use cards to alert candidates when time is about up and when time is up. Tonight, we have four candidates running for the three nomination positions in the June primary race to set the fall ballot for the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. And they are Lisa Green Douglas, Dean Finney, Roy San Porter, and Rod Sullivan. Let's begin with your two-minute opening statements. And we'll start with Lisa Green Douglas. Lisa, unmute your mic.
Yes. All right, there we go. Hi, and thank you, Jean, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. We are making history tonight, I believe. And so we'll see how it goes. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Lisa Green Douglas. I have been a resident of Johnson County since 1980. And I live in unincorporated North Liberty with my husband of almost 39 years. And this is where we raised our five children. And I have had a lot of different hats that I've worn since I've lived here. I was a grad student. And then I was a college professor. I left academia in 2007 and became an independent contractor providing job-specific Spanish language training. Whoops. Did I go? Oh, shoot. Job-specific Spanish language training all over the country for law enforcement and correctional officers and other professions. And I became a board member in January of 2016 in a special election. And I filled a term of someone else. And then I got elected to my own term also in 2016. And have been on the board and have had various committee and responsibility assignments since that time.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, Dean Finney.
Hi. You know, I would thank you for putting this together in this odd time. I also like to thank the voters for tuning in and listening to us and getting a feel for where we stand on the issues. I'm the new kid on the block. So I give a little more history. I grew up in north central Iowa, in a little farming community, Clark Lake, Iowa. Moved down to Iowa City in 1977 after being recruited to wrestle on the wrestling team by Dan Gable. We liked it so much that when I met my wife, we've also been married for 39 years since August. But we stayed in the community. We like the Johnson County area. I've had a very few jobs because I'm long-term. I don't like to give up on anything. I've been a maintenance supervisor, labor person. I had advanced property management, which I ran for 23 years. So I ran my own business in Johnson County. I drove a school bus because my son wanted to ride the school bus. I prefer student incorporated. And actually, we organized that site in 2006. And shortly after the election, I was asked by the Teamsters Union to become an organizer for them. And I've been doing that for 13 years. That's been very fulfilling because I'm a strong labor representative. I think everybody deserves a fair voice and a fair workplace. So I mean, I've really enjoyed that and have been doing that around the country. That's why my wife's been a widow for 13 years. Yes, that's about it.
Thank you, Dean. Next, Roy San Porter.
Yes. I got to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Roy San Porter, and I have lived in Johnson County for nearly 30 years. I currently live in Iowa City. I moved to rural Iowa nearly 30 years ago and later chose to make Johnson County my home because of all it has to offer. I've since experienced firsthand both the incredible opportunities and the numerous challenges and barriers newcomers, especially families of color, often encounter when joining our growing increasingly diverse community. As a result, I've dedicated my life to building a community that supports all residents, no matter where they are from, what their income is, or what level of education they have when they arrive. I've served on the Iowa City Community Police Review Board and the Steering Committee of the Iowa City Coalition for Racial Justice. I have worked as a juvenile court liaison and served on the Johnson County Disproportionate Minority Contact Committee and the Juvenile Justice Youth Development Policy Board. I also have experience with youth outside of the justice system, having worked with the Iowa City Community School District Equity Committee, African-American Parents Group, and Martin Luther King's Teacher in Service Planning Committee. I have been involved with many community-based organizations and helped found the Black Voices Project, in which I served as president, which helps black and white citizens participate in community life and family-to-family program, which meets families new to Iowa City area with ones already established here.
Thank you, Roy San.
Thank you.
Finally, Rod Sullivan.
Thank you. Well, hello. My name is Rod Sullivan. I'm incumbent member of the Board of Supervisors. I grew up on a heritage farm, which is 150 years in the same family, near Sutliffe. And I attended K-12 in the Lisbon School System. I'm an alumnus of the University of Iowa. I have held several positions in the field of human services, including six years with the Iowa Department of Human Services and six years as the Executive Director of Yarka, Johnson County. I'm married to Dr. Melissa Fath, who is a cancer researcher at the University of Iowa and volunteer pharmacist at Free Med. We have three adult children, Rachel, Jordan, and BJ, and we've been foster parents for another 50-plus children. I'm a member of a number of organizations in Johnson County, including St. Andrew Presbyterian Church, Iowa Foster and Adoptive Parent Association, NAMI Center for Worker Justice, ACLU Hawkeye Chapter, AFT Local 716. I'm a delegate to the Iowa City Federation of Labor and have served four years as Chair of the Johnson County Democratic Party. Some of the accomplishments of which I'm proud. Leadership during this current COVID crisis. Leadership during the 08 floods. Raising the minimum wage, first county to do so. Passing a human rights ordinance, first county to do so. Passing a sensitive areas ordinance, first county to do so. Passing the Conservation Bond Initiative, again, first county to do so. Community ID Program, again, first county in Iowa to do so. We started the 1105 Project with the gift of the Public Health Building. Saved the Sutliffe Bridge. Created the Free Tax Help Program. Successful Living for Successful Aging. Added outdoor warning sirens to Johnson County and created the Local Foods Policy Council. And I'm proud of all those many accomplishments.
Thank you. Let's turn to questions from our league members. I want to remind you that you have one minute to respond to each question. And Suzy will keep you apprised of how you're progressing. So let's begin with Dean Finney. And here's the question. And then we will go to each of the rest of you to respond to this question in sequence. Each question will rotate the order. So you'll all get an opportunity at some point to be leadoff. For this one, it's Dean. Describe your strongest competencies for serving as supervisor and your highest priority for the Board of Supervisors.
Because I ran a business for 23 years in Iowa City and have been a labor representative, I think that not only do I have the skills to work through difficult issues, as well as knowing financially and fiscally, you know, what we should do. And I think we're going to be pressed on that in the upcoming year or so just because of the COVID virus and what it's doing to our economy. That's why I think those things of... And I never give up. There's never a job or a task that you can't work. I've never found one.
And Roy San, same question?
Yes. I am a woman with working-class roots, and I am a woman of color who has worked across racial lines with members of our community, white, black, Latino, et cetera, for decades to make our home a better and more equitable place to live and to work and raise children. I worked in a meatpacking plant in rural Iowa when I first came to the state. I have worked as social services professionals in numerous ways, including, like I said early, juvenile court liaison, a star case manager for Shelter House, and as a community liaison for Four Oaks. I have worked a couple of years as a Teamsters organizing for minimum wage and workers' rights far as their minimum wage. Working, making sure to make sure working people have a voice and to get fair wage for a day's, a fair day's work. So one of the viewpoints I'll bring is understanding on many levels the struggles working folks in Johnson County have and how the services like those provided by the county make a difference in the lives of our neighbors.
Thank you. Rod Sullivan, same question?
Yeah, I would say that the biggest thing that I bring to the table is passion and compassion. I have a history of, I believe, caring for other people and following through and getting things done. I read you a long list of accomplishments, and I'm extremely proud of those. And most of those accomplishments haven't benefited people with power in Johnson County. They've benefited the average person. And I'm very proud of that. And if folks see fit to give me four more years, I will continue along those lines.
And finally, Lisa Green Douglas. Mike? Your microphone? Lisa, your microphone? Lisa? Your microphone?
Way better.
There, now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. If it's not right in front of me, I forgot. I, one of my strengths, and I think that serves me quite well on the board, is the ability to communicate with people from a variety of backgrounds, whether it's a difference in language or culture or class. I'm able to listen to all and bring them together to come to some sort of consensus. I have strong leadership and the ability to break down silos so that we can create a government that's responsive and efficient and has effective functioning. And my highest priority is to continue serving underserved populations within the county. As Rod pointed out, you know, we're not, we work for everybody. But the people that need a voice are the ones that are at the top of my list for those that need help from the county government.
Thank you. Our second question will begin with Roy San Porter. Here's their question. The COVID-19 pandemic has created a feeling of uncertainty. What is your view of the future for the local economy, for home values in our area, and for local jobs with living wages as we go through this time?
Yes. A primary challenge involves efforts to ensure that our citizens with limited resources are supported economically and financially. The future is going to involve many challenges for Johnson County in addition to many issues yet unknown. But we know still, we need to look at all of the communities, all of the communities and diverse populations in the county, virus or no virus. We will almost certainly want to push forward with research, internship, and training programs to make sure when we start and rebuild, we are rebuilding the future with and for everyone. We will get through Corona as a community working together, and then we will get past Corona as a community working together. So just making sure that we have so many people right now in unemployment. And that's one of the biggest things that people are facing right now. Some people have gotten checks, some have not. So we just want to make sure that we are covering all races, no matter. We have our farmers, we have our immigrants, we have all types of people that right now COVID-19 is affecting everybody. So we just want to make sure that we are working together as a community.
Thank you. Rod Sullivan.
That was my turn.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think that actually Johnson County, you know, we're really unique. We've got a really strong economy, and it has been so far, you know, somewhat, knock on wood, a little bit recession-proof. You know, we've had some, some pretty big dips in the economy, and Johnson County's always been pretty strong. So I don't expect home values to drop dramatically. I do think we could see some drop in some commercial property. And that's something we're going to have to deal with. People are shopping in a different way now than they used to. You know, the economy had some serious holes in it before this hit. And in a lot of ways, this has ripped off the veneer, and we're able to see that there were just way too many people struggling and way too many low-wage, unbenefited jobs prior to this. That hasn't gone away. As a matter of fact, that's going to get a lot worse. And so we have to figure out how we can spread the wealth amongst all the people in our community and build it as best we can across all income levels.
Thank you. Lisa Green Douglas.
There, I remembered to unmute this time. I do think that one of the things that's fortunate is we went into this as a county with a very strong budget. We also have a reserve of about 30%. And we set aside money in this year's budget specifically for emergencies. So there's a bit of a buffer, but we have to look at the entire county. And I think that there has been a lot of opportunity. Unfortunately, it was created in a very dramatic and traumatic way. But it has created opportunity, and that is that a lot of companies and the county government included quickly responded by learning how to work from home and how to support people to work from home. That has a lot of benefits. It increases productivity, and in fact, it takes cars off the road. So there's a plus. We also have revisited and strengthened our ties with other entities within the community because of this, because we've had to come together and work together. And it's been very heartwarming really to see the various entities helping each other out. And another way is that the people who are working and aren't, you know, on lockdown, so to speak, some of those frontline workers in our food plants and in grocery stores are low-wage earners. And as a county, we did increase the minimum wage again last week, in fact, indexed with the Consumer Price Index. We have no authority right now because of the state to enforce that, but someday we hope to. But we wanted to show support to those workers who are out there facing this pandemic head-on and are in fact putting their lives on the line. And so we're going to have to continue looking at those wages and helping people out in that way, giving them our support.
Thank you. And Dean Finney?
Yeah. I hear about COVID-19 every day. I'm currently working for a contractor for the CDC. I'm responding to these calls. So I hear, you know, the fear in everybody's voice and the issues that we're going through. And I think Johnson County is a little buffered. But I still think there's those people out there that don't make a lot of money, that live check to check, that are either getting laid off or getting their hours reduced because of reduced demand. And I think we're going to have to work with those groups, food pantries and shelters and the ones that service the people that don't have a lot. You know, I'm blessed to have a house and a wonderful family. But I see every day when I do one trip down to the post office or run into the store that people that are still don't have anything that they can back or rely on or back up a plan. And I think that's going to come up probably in the next six months to nine months, maybe early next year. But it's going to be something that Johnson County is going to have to deal with to make sure our citizens have what they need, you know, and all of them.
Thank you. This question will begin with Rod Sullivan. Again, related to the COVID-19 epidemic, it's on everyone's mind. So this focuses on healthcare and mental health care. The stress of the COVID-19 epidemic is likely to require additional resources to be allocated for healthcare and mental health care, especially as people deal with job loss, which affects their employer-provided healthcare. How would you make resources available to address these concerns?
Well, the first answer has to be that this is a problem that we have federally. And there's really no local solution, no matter what anybody tells you. The solution is a single-payer healthcare system, which the United States needs to join the other 185 counties or countries in the world that have that. And until we do that, we're not going to be able to solve this at the Johnson County level. Johnson County has a rich history of supporting mental health services. We have long taxed the maximum that we can and put that into mental health. As a matter of fact, we lobbied the legislature a few years ago to allow us to tax ourselves even more for mental health services. And so I am a longtime believer in funding and providing those services. And I think those are going to be, as the questioner said, they're going to be even more important in the days to come. So we'll have to do everything we can and more. But we're going to have to also look at our partners at the state and federal level to really do this right.
Thank you. Lisa Green Douglas.
Sorry, I'll learn by the end of this. There are certain things we can do and certain things that we can't do. And what we can do are those mental health services that you spoke of, Jean. And we are doing a lot in that, in that area. And in fact, we are building currently an access center that will open up in January. It will be a place for crisis observation, crisis stabilization, and substance abuse support. And in addition, there will be a low-barrier shelter right next to it. And I think that what we need to do then, in terms of, we're doing great in terms of providing mental health care, but we have to make sure that we take care of the people who are taking care of those who are suffering. We need to give them support systems. We need to make sure that on the job, areas, both physical areas and then support from their employers are there so that they don't suffer from post-traumatic stress as well. So support our workers who are doing the work.
Thank you. Dean Finney?
I agree with Rod. We, we need a single-help payer plan. But until then, you know, we have to see what's going to work. We can wait for the state and national government to step in, or we can buckle down and figure something out for our residents in Johnson County. I think we need to protect the frontline workers. I mean, God bless all of them that are working in hospitals, I mean, every day. But we also need to make sure that we can fund additionally as the need increases. We may have considered, you know, further grants to mental health care agencies, maybe even a grant or some function that where we can help those that don't have healthcare, you know, in helping with their bills or a means for which they can get through this. And like I said, we can get through this together, but we got to work together for all the citizens and not just, you know, wait on it, you know, for the federal government or the state government to step in.
Thank you. Roy San Porter?
Yeah, I agree with everything everyone else has said. And just to reiterate that, we need a board that will continue to prioritize and protect the vital services our county provides. Our county already provides great service for these types of things we have worked so hard on, from mental health services to public facilities to the county roads. And when we talk about the mental health, like Lisa said, we will be supporting the Guy Link Essex Center, that the project that everybody is really happy to see coming our way because this is a partnership between counties, between Johnson County and the cities to have an alternative to jail for people in some kind of crisis, like needing detox or whatever. So we've partnered with the Sheriff Department, in working with the Sheriff Department, in working with the Crisis Center, in working with Prelude, and just all kinds of people coming together to put together this help that's needed in our community for mental health. And we know that it's needed. So I'm looking forward to just being a part of the Guy Link Center. And I think Johnson County is already doing all that they can.
Thank you. Our next question focuses on budget. And Lisa Green Douglas will be the first, first person to answer. Here's the question. We are likely to see an impact of the COVID-19 emergency on budget at all levels of government. What would you recommend as a strategy to be prepared for increased fiscal constraints in the county?
Thank you. I think that we already, I already mentioned that we have reserves. We had a strong budget going into this, and we set aside money for emergencies. But that's not going to cut, cut it in terms of the impact this is going to have. But there are so many things that we don't have any control over. One of those things is we don't have control over revenues coming in. And if they're going to be delayed or something like that, we don't have control over interest rates. But we do in fact have control over our expenditures. And while our budget has been set for FY '21, I proposed the other day that we ask each of our department heads to go in, back into what they were planning to spend for FY '21 and to indicate one way that they can cut their expenses. Sometimes unfortunately, it will be a big sacrifice, but it will be one of those things that maybe it can be spread out over the next fiscal year. And so if they make a sacrifice and a cut, then we can get through this, this hard time in terms of our budget and the impact COVID will have on that.
Thank you. Dean Finney?
Look, I think we are going to have some issues as we come up here. I'm a firm believer in people before, you know, projects. So we may have to put some items off. We may ask the departments, just, hey, listen, you know, do you really need that printer this year? Can you put it off to next year? I mean, economize as much as you can. Put new expenditures maybe on hold unless they're definitely needed for, you know, health or safety. And then make sure that there are programs that support our people or handle first. And then our projects are looked at to see what we really, really have to have.
Thank you. Roy San Porter?
Okay. For, we just had our finance director give us a budget report. And from what he had spoken, not really expecting a budget shortfall for this fiscal year. And in speaking with our HHS Social Services, Lynette Jacoby, due to social services having unencumbered funds, including the remaining balance of our hunger relief, our poverty initiatives, and emergency flex that was made available for emergency relief. In keeping with the state and federal dollars, we're looking to receive reimbursement monies from HHS and FEMA. And next fiscal year, we could be faced with gas hotel shortfalls. But then, we would then look to our department heads to review their budgets and expenditures to make cuts where need to be. So like Jean said, there might have to be something in secondary roles where we might have helped, was going to start a project, and we can't. We have to put that off to balance that out. So I think we're looking pretty good for this year.
Thank you. And Rod Sullivan?
Yeah. So one thing that I think a lot of people don't understand is most of our budget comes from property taxes. But there's a pretty big percentage of the budget that comes through other things, which are often federal programs, like Medicaid money that gets transferred through or state money that gets transferred through. We have, I think the property tax thing is going to be actually decent. I don't think we're going to have that many problems in that area. But for example, gas tax is problems in that area, but for example, gas tax is way, way down because people aren't driving. But the solution to that is fairly simple. Gas tax pays for road projects. You simply will have to put off that road project. So I think that a lot of this is really actually fairly easy to track where the money comes, where the money goes. And as long as we're frugal, I think we'll get through this. We will undoubtedly have to put some things off, but we do that all the time. I think we can do it again this time and be fine.
Thank you. This question will begin with Dean Vinnie. What do you consider the best and worst decisions that the supervisors have made in the past twelve months?
Well, I have to go back a little bit further, but the best decision is redoing some of the comprehensive plan and the ordinance, the new building ordinances they've done. Because they're correcting some of the issues that came up that weren't really thoroughly thought through. The worst is not carrying through with some of the stuff that's in the new comprehensive plan. It was actually voted two years ago and there's still items in there that aren't being completed, that should be completed, that were, that are important to the plan, but they're just been overlooked. And they're just sitting there in limbo. And I think that's, that's a short coming of county government. That those projects and processes need to be completed and I just left hanging.
Thank you. Roy San Porter?
Well, for me, coming on, the biggest project was the PDS, the ordinance. And I was really pleased with the outcome of that ordinance. For me, making the decision that I made for the ordinance, to me, was a good compromise. I was able to go out and talk to farmers and go out. I went to planning and zoning meetings, something I had never done before. I got a chance to talk to farmers. I went out to farmers' houses and out to the farms. You might see on my Facebook page, I was on tractors and I was asked to come back and do some more stuff that I haven't done yet, but it was just an opportunity. It gave me an opportunity, which I really liked, to get to know people and see people. And those people got a chance to see me for who I was when I said that I was going to represent everybody. And they looked at me, they didn't even know my background or anything. And the biggest thing for them was them not knowing that I had even worked at an IBP. They just couldn't believe it. And once I started talking to them and opening up, we just opened up and talked. And for me, the decision that I made, like I said, was a good compromise for the ordinance. And the biggest thing now for me is the strategic planning that we're doing. And so I'm working on my piece in the diversity and inclusion piece. So I'm just ready to just bring a lot of my perspectives on to the board as to how Johnson County can grow.
Thank you. Rod Sullivan?
Well, I would say that the best decision that we made in the past year was going ahead and breaking ground and getting going on the Guide Link Center. I think that's going to be a very, very important piece of this community. It's going to reduce the numbers of people that need the emergency rooms. It's going to reduce the number of people who need a jail bed. And it's just a much more humane way to treat a number of people in this county who have mental health or substance abuse or some combination of those issues. And it's been a long time coming and I'm glad we're going to do it. The worst decision we've made in the last year, gosh, I would have to say we mishandled some of the rollout of the Unified Development Ordinance. I don't think, I don't have problems with the ordinance itself. There's still a few things to fix. I think there's some things that given, you know, hindsight being 2020, if we could go back and change the way we do it, I would change some of the way we rolled it out.
Thank you. And Lisa Green Douglas?
Well, this is really a tough question. And I'm having a hard time zeroing in on one thing, so I'm going to talk best, put in two things for the best. So I think that one of the best decisions we did was for our own employees and implementing the results of a compensation study that we had done and bringing people in our county up to par in terms of what they were getting paid with comparable sized counties. And, and also like within, to fit in with our economy, because we do have a higher cost of living here. And the other thing is that I advocated very strongly for the no impact to prairies on our sensitive areas in ordinance and got it down to zero impact. You just can't develop prairies or prairie remnants. I feel very proud of that. And then probably the worst decision we've made is, gosh, that's a hard one. But I'm very frankly, I did not like how we went through the finalization of the Unified Development Ordinance. I feel like we could in fact, have implemented the changes that were recommended by the staff and we did not do that. And I think we should have.
Thank you. We have come to the time for closing statements already. It seems as if this time has gone very rapidly. So here we are going to ask each candidate to take two minutes to make a closing statement for us. And we will begin with Roy San Porter.
Oh, sure.
Oh, sure.
Okay, I'd just like to say that Johnson County, Johnson County is an amazing county with so much potential. And while we've made many strides, much remains to be achieved. It's time for certain barriers to be broken that will open the door to radical change in our county. I'm committed to building a safe and healthy community as for all our residents to not just survive, but thrive. As a Johnson County resident, community leader, community advocate, community activist, and community volunteer, I understand the change we need in our neighborhoods. Vote for me because I am a great listener. Vote for me because I ask the hard questions and vote for me because I don't back down. Since being elected to the board, I have proven that I am a great listener who will keep asking questions, even the hard ones, to make sure I can make the best possible, best possible decisions on behalf of the residents of Johnson County. And when I can see that what has to be done, I'm going to fight for that and not be the one to back down. I will continue to bring the perspective of working people to the Board of Supervisors. I am committed to inspiring, empowering, connecting, and bringing action to our local communities. I am a recognized longtime community leader who have devoted much time in improving the lives of my neighbors. I have been an advocate in Johnson County for decades on a wide array of issues, including mental health services, affordable housing, veteran services, workers' rights, restorative justice, and opportunities for you. I will continue, or I look forward to continuing to work collaboratively with my colleagues on the Johnson County Board of Supervisors to ensure productive outcomes that benefit our residents of Johnson County.
Thank you, Roy San. Rod Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. It's a very different way of doing it and I'm, doesn't bother me to be one of your guinea pigs. So thank you. I think that I've mentioned a couple of different times that I have a long history of accomplishment here. I think that the accomplishments of the Board of Supervisors in Johnson County, since I've been a member, are unparalleled in the state of Iowa. I'd put them up against anybody. I'm really proud of the work that we've accomplished. It's interesting, I counted up and in the last eight years, Johnson County's had eleven people serve as county supervisor. Eleven people in eight years. That's quite a few. And I think if you ask county staff and even the other county elected officials, they would tell you that I bring a real stability to Johnson County. I've been there for a while, but I'm also a person who has institutional memory. I know how things get done and that there's a lot of things that we don't have to recreate the wheel because I already know how things work. And I think that's experience that is critical to Johnson County and I'm happy to bring that to the board. If I'm reelected, four main goals I have, continue the community recovery from the COVID-19 virus, begin serving people at the Guide Link Center. I'd like to improve our affirmative action results. That's a place where we need to do better. And we will have six union contracts up for renegotiation and I want to renegotiate those to the benefit of all people. So I'm very grateful for your past support and I thank you for future consideration. I promise I will never take this job for granted and I would respectfully request your vote on or before June 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lisa Green Douglas?
Thank you for setting this up. I didn't know how it was going to work, but I think it's worked quite well. I think that I have provided in my time on the board, strong leadership and I have now gained experience as a board member. I listen to research and data and our experts and then I make a decision. I don't claim to always make the right decision, but I do claim to always have the best interest of our community in mind and in my heart when I vote on something. And I will continue to support those who don't have a voice. I will continue to advocate for the greener option whenever that is a possibility. I will continue to support practices that increase equity and inclusion within our county. And I would respectfully ask for your vote. You get three votes. I would appreciate very much one of those votes. And I will promise that I will continue to be a good steward of the taxpayer money, always keeping your best interests in mind. I have some goals as well. One of those goals is to, to get the county to become more actively involved in economic development, rather than just a member on a board that somebody else is directing. I think we could be creators of economic development. And in fact, we've formed an Economic Development Committee on which I serve. And another area is that we are a growing county and that county is becoming more and more diverse. And I think that we need to bring inclusion and equity to all of the programs we offer with our community partners, but also within our county workplace, increasing the diversity among our employees and breaking down barriers that can exist because of maybe perhaps not quite enough diversion there. And I thank you again and I ask for your vote on or before June 2nd.
Thank you. And Dean Vinnie?
Again, thank you for doing this. It's been, it's been an experience with just very few little glitches. I'm asking for your vote because I'm the new kid in the block and I know I owe nobody nothing. I come to this fresh and clean with different ideas. I've worked, my mother is a single divorced with three boys. I know we ate her out of house and home, but she's instilled good values. Won the value of a dollar. Never lie to anybody because they come around and get you in the end. If you don't shake a man's hand, and then tomorrow I'll be able to look him in the eye. That's, that's, it's just old school values. And never put anything off. I mean, if you're going to start something, complete it. And that's what I vow to do. I mean, I will never, I think everybody should have equal access to the board. It's not who you know. When you walk in there, you should have equal access and have anything you bring before the board fairly and without predispositions. And then I promise I'll do that because I come into this clean. I do make a promise that I will drive every county road, even though I lived in the county for twenty-four years and have been in town for forty-three years. I will drive every county road in Johnson County just to see, you know, where their conditions are. Mine was terrible where I lived. It was, it was terrible road. But we love, we love the county. And I'll also make a pledge to make sure that I go to each one of the municipalities in our county to one of their meetings so they know that the supervisors are there and we're going to work for the county cities so that they can run, work better with us. And because I think some of that's missing, that we don't work closely with the cities so we can help direct where the development is and so that farm ground doesn't get used up, that shouldn't be used. And that we respect their rights too. I mean, I'm from a farming community. I lived, all my friends were farmers. I learned how to bale hay. And I want to bring those common sense values back to the board. That's why I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you candidates for joining us in this experiment. I too think it has gone rather well. The recording of this forum will be available on the Facebook page of the League of Women Voters. In addition, rebroadcasts of this forum will be run on the Iowa City Channel Four, on Coral Vision and North Liberty TV. You can see their respective websites for program schedules. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Given the current COVID-19 emergency, we urge you to request an absentee ballot from the auditor's office. If you have not already done so, go to the Johnson County Auditor's website to find the request form. June 2nd is primary day. Be sure you vote then or before. Thank you very much for your attention during this event this evening. And again, many thanks to the candidates for your participation tonight. Good night.